All right. Good evening, Placerville. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 13 meeting of the Placerville City Council and the Placerville Public Financing Authority. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome again to the City Council meeting. It's good to have a somewhat of a full crowd, so welcome everyone tonight. And we'll go ahead and get started here with roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Here.
Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor No?
Here.
Mayor Saragosa?
Here. Councilmember Clarici still getting used to the new microphones?
It's got a lot of sound to it.
These are a little weird, but I'll have to get used to them. Okay, so moving on to item three, and first item is item 3.1, which is a proclamation recognizing June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual Pride Month. And I will go ahead and I will read our proclamation. So I'll start with, since I already gave the title, I will start with the whereas. For more than two centuries, the founding principles and ideals of American life have included liberty, equality, freedom of expression, and the pursuit of happiness, which are intended to apply to everyone. And whereas Marsha P. Johnson, a prominent leader of LGBTQIA+ Pride, proclaimed, "No pride for some of us without liberation for all of us," inspiring a commitment to inclusivity, compassion, and mutual aid in support of these ideals. And whereas equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are fundamental to supporting joy, personal fulfillment, and economic success. And whereas the city of Placerville celebrates the American values of liberty, equality, freedom of expression, and the pursuit of happiness, and recognizes the importance of its residents, visitors, and employees to safely express their multifaceted identities which enrich our communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council, the city of Placerville, does hereby recognize June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and honors all efforts that provide opportunities for a life free from discrimination and prejudice and in support of equality and the pursuit of happiness. Day it today. And I believe, so we have Kristin Patterson, who's Director of New Morning Youth and Family Services, who will actually, I'm tongue-tied, accept the proclamation.
Come and take that.
Yes, well, come and take this from my hand. So I will go down and present this proclamation.
Come on down.
Everybody come get a picture.
They asked me to get our photos.
Do they want the rest of us down?
Specifically asked.
Yes.
Two John.
Finish your cookie.
The pastor's making the photo, that's gonna be.
And then we'll go ahead and open up for public comments.
Hi, everyone. My name is.
That was.
That doesn't work.
I am.
There, now it's on. Okay. My name is Kara Sather, and I am the Press Secretary for Senator Marie Alvarado Gill. And I'm just here to recognize the city of Placerville with a certificate from the California State Senate in recognition of Pride Month. So it says, "On behalf of the California State Senate, I would like to acknowledge the city of Placerville for supporting the LGBTQ+ community during Pride Month and creating a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusivity, presented on this date, June 13, 2023."
All right. Thank you, and thank the Senator for us.
Go get back down there.
You're wireless now.
That's true.
We're all getting pictures.
It's a male.
That's okay. I like how the people that have jobs dress up, you know?
And those of us.
I mean, quite honestly, I should get put on a coat and a tie and a shirt and be in my underwear back here, which would be scary. You're welcome. Anytime.
I'm John Savage, and I've lived in the Placerville area for 26 years. I would like to thank the members of the City Council for the Pride Month proclamation. Some people may wonder why a Pride proclamation is needed. The answer is simple. It is needed because for far too long LGBTQ+ people have been told they should be ashamed of who they are. From the time an LGT-- now I'm getting tongue-tied. From the time an LGBTQ-- and it's a mouthful-- plus person develops any self-awareness, they know that they are different. They know they grow up being made fun of and bullied. About the time they reach puberty, they start to realize what it is that makes them different. And they are subjected to a barrage of messages that who they are is not okay. They hear it from religious and political leaders. They hear it from some of their peers and teachers. Many live in fear of being cast out of their churches or estranged from their family members. This proclamation sends the positive message that LGBTQ+ people are accepted and valued by the city of Placerville, and it is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on item 3.1? All right, seeing none. Any comments by City Council?
I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank our queer youth group for coming out tonight and everybody who's shown your support for our community. It was important to me to have this proclamation. I am queer. I'm sure most folks know that in our community at this point. And, you know, I wanted folks to know that our city is supportive and that Placerville is a, you know, safe, welcoming place that you can call your home.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, well, very good, yes. Well, and everyone is more than welcome to stay if they want, but we also, we will not be offended if you want to leave as well. So up to you. So thank you. Good night. That's right, yeah. You don't want to, probably don't want to sit through a budget meeting. Okay, so we have a second proclamation this evening, and that proclamation is for Eldorado County Fair Week. And so this proclamation proclaiming June 15 through the 18th as Eldorado County Fair Week. So whereas the 2023 theme for the Eldorado County Fair is country nights and carnival lights, and whereas the Eldorado County Fair is a vital part of our community since the first fair in 1859, offering an opportunity to showcase the myriad talents and industry of our citizens of all ages, particularly the youth involved in agricultural and livestock programs. And whereas the Eldorado County Fair continues to encourage participation and recognition of the diverse accomplishments of the county's youth through an innovative partnership with the Eldorado County Office of Education, Future Farmers of America, Local Grange, University of California Cooperative Extension, and the Fair Association. And whereas the Eldorado County Fair enriches the public's knowledge of the world around them through educational exhibits such as the Eldorado County Historical Museum, EDC Master Food Preservers, the Junior Livestock Auction, and ag-related featured booths, and the many demonstrations given by the master gardeners. And whereas the Eldorado County Fair fosters increased cultural awareness and appreciation of the arts by providing a venue for the exhibition of dance, music, art, and photography. And whereas some of the highlights for this year's fair be enjoyed by you and your families include wheelbarrow races, the Rubicon Jeep Jamboree Challenge, this is my favorite, the racing pigs, Father's Day look-alike contest, pageants for Miss Eldorado and the Eldorado County Rose, Pee-wee rodeo, mutton bustin' and rodeo, game shows for the Best Friends Challenge, Not So Newlywed and Father Knows Best, blacksmith demos, and much, much more. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Placerville City Council urges all citizens to participate in the many activities offered at this year's county nights and carnival lights at the Placerville fairgrounds on June 8 through Father's Day, June 18. The City Council extends its thanks to the many volunteers whose dedication is an essential part of the success of our annual county fair, and wishes, and best wishes to the Board of Directors and staff for another successful Eldorado County Fair. Thank you. All right. And I don't know if you all want to come up and say a few words as well about the fair before-- it's up to you. You don't have to. We can do a picture, but, yeah, let's do that.
I'm Karen Forney-Feathers. I'm the president of the Eldorado County Fair Association, and I also have here tonight with me Lori Warden, and she is our treasurer. And thank you, guys, for the proclamation. We are running really fast right now trying to get ourselves ready for Thursday opening. If you've gone by the fairgrounds, it's a beehive of activity. It's just crazy right now. We have some, like the racing pigs, that's a fun, fun event. Trying to think of some other new things that are going on this year. But so we're, the fair opens on Thursday at noon, and we'll have a little ceremony. It's not going to be as big as we've done in the past. And then we'll open right at noon and get those gates open and get everybody in and get things started. So we're hoping to see everybody there. It's fun times for all. And the weather's going to be perfect this year. Yay for us.
The weather's going to be great. I mean, couldn't have asked for better weather.
It is going to be great. Did you want to say anything? Just glad you're here. Yes, well, thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah, go buy those tacos. I will have several over a couple of days, I think.
You can go to the boat, too, because I already did a budget today.
Understood.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
We'll go ahead and open up if anyone else wants to make public comments on item 3.2. All right, seeing none. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Any other comments by City Council? All right. Okay, so then we will move on to item four, which is our closed session report. And City Attorney, do we have anything to report out?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Saragosa. The Council did meet in closed session on three items tonight. There was no public comment in advance of closed session. There was no reportable action on item one, but there was direction provided to staff on items two and three.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move to item five, which is adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. First and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye. All right, agenda is adopted. Moving on to item six, announcements and presentations to the public at item 6.1, comments by City Council. And we'll start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I have none.
All right. Councilmember Clarici?
I had the honor of going to Golden History Days on Saturday downtown. It was, I was there early, had some obligations in the afternoon, but very nicely done, lots of interesting things. We learned how to play Pharaoh, which is a card game, and generally enjoyed it, and lots of good stuff. So, and I understand it was pretty well attended in the afternoon, so hats off to all those people. Those things on Main Street are a lot of work, and so good for them and good for the community.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All right. David?
I have none.
All right. For myself, same as John said, we were down for wagon train. I think I was there from about nine to one. It was really, yeah, it was a lot of fun. Got to, yeah, I've heard of Pharaoh in movies, so it was fun to actually learn what it was. And of course, I lost all my money, just like I would have in real life, so it actually was very realistic on how it was. But yes, thank you to all the volunteers, as well as city staff and PPD that, you know, made all that possible to happen as well. And next year is the 75th anniversary of the wagon train, so, you know, looking to hopefully make that, you know, a really big event next year, so.
Just for the record, we didn't actually gamble any of our own money. They gave us chip.
This is true.
Just want to make sure.
Very true. All right. Moving on then to item seven.
Public comment?
Ah, yes. Public comment on item 6.1. Seeing none. We'll go ahead to item seven, which is a consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Is there any items that the council wishes to pull? All right, seeing none. I will go ahead and open up the consent calendar for public comment. Seeing none. I'll go ahead and close public comment for the consent calendar and bring it back to the council for motion.
I'll move to adopt.
All right.
A second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye. All right. Thank you. Okay, moving to item eight, which is our public comment section for non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes, and you are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. So we will then start then and open it up with item 8.1, which is our oral communication. So if you'd like to make public comments, please come to the podium. All right, going once, going twice, sold. All right, no public comments tonight. Moving on then to item 8.2. Regina, do we have any written communications?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't.
All right. Okay, so we did not have any items pulled from consent, and there are no ordinance this evening, so we will move to our public hearings in item 11.1, which is a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2023/2024 operating and capital improvement program budget proposals. And Mr. Warren has this for us.
Evening, Mayor Saragosa and members of the council. So tonight is kind of a follow-up to your two budget workshops that were held in May, and the information is essentially the same as what you saw on May 30. So we will review sales tax trends, we'll look at your general fund budget, other city fund budgets, as well as your capital improvement program budget. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Ah, I like this. This is our new screen over here.
So how is the lighting on the screen? Is that okay? Can you see it okay? Great. Okay. So looking at sales tax, which is your Bradley Burn Sales Tax, which is your general fund sales tax, 1 percentage point of the 8.25, most significant economic indicator you have. It represents 58% of your general fund revenue. You have strong per capita sales tax at $633 in 2022 per person. Placerville is ranked number 37 out of 539 cities in 2022, which is very good. And the quarter ended December 2022, receipts were up by $3,992, or excuse me, down by $3,992 or 0.2% on the cash basis, which included back taxes. And when you remove the back taxes, it actually ended up being $41,785 or 2.4% decrease. Statewide actually experienced a 4.6% increase. Again, the coastal cities are recovering later than we did. We had an early recovery, and now things are starting to slow down a little bit, but they're still recovering, and so that's why they're, overall, the average is higher than ours. And then the contributors towards your sales tax, you can see the state and county pool, which is your online sales tax, auto and transportation, 25.04%, and building construction, 14.64%. And you can see the others there. Proportionally, it's about the same as this time last year. And it's important to note those three categories I mentioned earlier, when you look at this graph that shows the growth or loss. So you can see autos and transportation left actually dropped.
Dave, you might have to get a little bit closer to the--
Towards you. All right. How's that?
Even closer. Even closer.
Maybe our technician can use the microphone. The, there we go. Thank you. Building and construction up by 0.52%, and then all the way across to the right-hand side, you can see state and county pool, negative 0.674%. And then winners and losers in between. And then the trend, you can see the red bar is our actual cash receipts, and then the blue is adjusted for annual inflation. Green is cumulative inflation since 2013, and you can see that where we're at. So things are kind of flattening out over the last three years. We did fairly well during the pandemic, but now things are cooling down. When you look at the cumulative effect of inflation, we're actually at the 17, 18 level. And the fiscal year 2223, the current fiscal year budget, we're looking at about 6.6 million in collections, and then next year, a little higher, 6.66,685,984, which also includes, we assume, nine months of harbor freight, which hopefully appears it's going to open sometime this fall, knock on wood. So we did include that in that estimate. And then just as a reminder, your general fund is the only true source of revenue. It pays for most city services, including public safety, streets, parks, and recreation. In building the budget, we did assume a status quo budget, meaning the same level of operation. We did maintain, trying to maintain the existing program delivery to the greatest extent possible, and we also included foreseeable projected economic impacts, for example, electricity going up, healthcare premiums going up, those kind of things, gas, all those things we assumed increases. So the major assumptions, we did assume, based on Mr. Rivas's forecasts, primarily $228,000 in additional development fees, primarily due to the Mallard-Middletown Road apartment complexes that are going to be built next year. We did assume $100,000 contingency. That's a $25,000 bump for unforeseen things. 10% increase in medical insurance. Retiree medical, we pay as you go. There's no pre-funding. And we did assume the employee cost of living adjustments and salary study adjustments that you promised your labor groups. It does include $275,000 in capital outlay requests. Those are equipment items, anything from a police car to a pickup truck to computers. And then $269,775 for capital improvement program projects, or CIP projects. $52,000 and some change for conference training and travel, and then $871,602 for alternative service levels, and we'll get more into the details of those on the next slide. Of those things, a little over $1 million are one-time in costs, and that's real important because when we look at the total budget and how we end up at the bottom line. So looking at the alternative service levels, you can see the first one, excuse me, we have an additional school resource officer. So this would be an addition, this would actually convert an existing full-time school resource officer to a part-time, freeing up that full-time position to patrol, and that would be about a half-time position for school resource. Also, an additional police officer position. We also have, we're abolishing, recommending abolishing a senior police dispatcher, but replacing it with a dispatcher technician position. And then you have a proposal from Eldorado Disposal for the SB 1383 compost. We did assume that procurement program for this fiscal year, $10,103. And then in the engineering department, we have reclassification of the associate engineers, the two positions, to senior engineer positions. We also have an additional associate engineer to help us out with our capital improvement program and development projects, because the workload's very heavy right now. We also are looking at discontinuing the Pride Industries contract and then augmenting an additional maintenance worker position in community services in the Parks Division, Facilities Division, primarily for janitorial services at the parks, your city parking lots, downtown public restroom, and the water reclamation facility. I don't know why that keeps cutting it down. So you have an additional park maintenance worker, excuse me, additional maintenance worker one, and a parks maintenance worker position. We're also looking at rolling out a new cornhole tournament program, which is very exciting. That'll be a first. And then we're also contracting preventative maintenance for our generators, for city hall, excuse me, town hall, city hall, and the police department for more comprehensive maintenance on those. We're also looking at rolling out artificial intelligent inspection software subscription for our pipe to better maximize our staffing, streamlining that process so it doesn't take so much staff time. And then social media, public outreach, we have a current contract that we would like to continue ongoing, and that's a $31,000 ongoing cost, so we're building that into the budget. A one-time contribution towards pension unfunded liability, this is the first time we've done this. So you have currently about a $17 million unfunded pension liability. We'll think of that as your credit card balance. And so what we're asking is a $500,000 contribution that would save you about $500,000 over 20 years in interest. And that would also free up about $42,000 in ongoing net revenue each year. And then increasing the general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures from $75,000 to $100,000, or $25,000 difference. So at the bottom there, you can see that the total cost net of cost recovery is $829,579 for all funds. Your general fund, $1,007,000, and then that would be net against the $136,000 in cost recovery for the two engineering proposals. Debt service, so most of your debt service is due to the water reclamation facility. Total debt service this year, principal and interest, is $2,813,701. You can see on the far right, $2.6 billion for the sewer enterprise fund, and we also have lease payments, capital lease payments, to your general fund, parking, downtown water enterprise fund, and sewer enterprise fund. Transfers, the general fund does transfer funds to and from, which is an appropriate thing to do in local government. So for example, we transfer gas tax revenue for day-to-day street maintenance, and you can see that in 2223, the amount was $342,000. The League of California Cities is estimating about $336,000, slightly less, about $5,000 less. And then you can see the other transfers there to the general CIP fund, actually from this general CIP fund for the latter grant cannabis community. We did assume $63,000 coming to the general fund for, it could be CIP projects or equipment projects, and that is an estimate. We may have to adjust that based on the committee's recommendation that's coming here. Let's see here, the parking district fund pays a little over $8,000 for employee parking to that fund. And then Measure J, because it has a $291,000 deficit, we're transferring those funds to that fund for police services. The general CIP fund, there's no transfer there because we're showing it separately in the next slide, but it represents about $269,000. in the next slide, but it represents about two hundred and, let me see, about two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then the general liability fund, a transfer to that fund from the general fund for property and general liability insurance. And then kind of looking at your general fund budget compared to this year. So this year we have, excuse me, eleven million, seven hundred and eighty, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars budgeted in revenue, little over eleven million dollars, eleven million, four sixty-seven, two five eight, the proposed. And then the expenditures, eleven million, four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two, net transfers in, actually be transfers out, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. So at that point, you have a forty, four, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollar surplus. But when you add the ASLs, the capital outlay, the CIP requests and the conference training and travel, you end up with a million dollar deficit. However, a little over a million dollars of that is one time in nature. So what we're saying is, and I'll show you the graph that shows our cumulative surpluses over the last three years. We've accumulated about three point six million dollars in surpluses estimated for this year, but through this year. So we're saying, let's take some of those spoils, use it for one time, things like paying down the unfunded liability of PERS and doing some CIP projects, so. And then drilling down to your revenues, you can see that sales tax, we've already talked about that, about a sixty-one thousand dollar increase budget-wise. All other taxes, that's your property tax, your business license, your franchise fees, property transfer tax, cannabis tax. The big increase there, the hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars is primarily due to growth in cannabis tax, believe it or not. Construction, construction permits, increase of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars again. We're assuming the Mallard Middletown Road projects being constructed next year. Pretty big bump, we don't anticipate those kind of level of projects going forward after next fiscal year or so. But a nice little surge of revenue. Intergovernmental revenue, that's your vehicle license fees up by thirty-seven thousand dollars. Charges for services, anything from parks and rec, planning fees, building fees, those kinds of things. Fines and forfeitures down by about three thousand dollars slightly there. Use of money on property, down slightly by about eleven thousand dollars estimated. So overall, for the entire fund, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four oh one or a four point one seven percent increase in revenue. And then on the expenditures, you can see the variances there by department. We talked about the ASLs in the police department, that's the primary driver. We also have, you know, the cost of living adjustments, medical insurance increases, those kinds of things. So you can see there's variances, public works is actually slightly down based on actual, you know, estimated personnel and whatnot. I'm sorry, maybe our technician can raise the volume again, just a little bit more. So the total increase is one million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars or twelve point four five percent. Again, about a million dollars of that is one time in nature. And this is just kind of showing you the general fund, just one dollar of the general fund, how it's allocated. So again, police department, thirty-two cents, community services, twenty-five. Non-departmental, things like audit, animal services, those things, thirteen cents. City administration, seven cents, public work, seven cents, development services, seven, finance, five, engineering, three, and city council, one. So very affordable. And then looking at your budget, kind of comparing revenue compared to expenditures, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, you can see on the far left, sales tax represents approximately the same value as community services and police department, which is two of your larger departments. And you can see the other revenues and expenditures there. This is the one I was talking about earlier. This shows you the trend and you can see that over the last three years, we've had really good growth and surprisingly, going through the pandemic, but we did, Plasterville did very well. But we've actually grown about a little over three point six million dollars. We anticipate spending down about a million dollars of that surplus this coming year. Your water enterprise fund is doing fine, there's no planned increases built into this budget. However, we are working on the water sewer cost of service study. So for right now, there's no planned increases for this fiscal year. You can see the growth there from two point five million to three point three in the revenue. There are some additional connection fees included in that and rate revenue is doing okay. So starting out, you can see we have an eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollar surplus. We add in the ASLs, capital outlay, conference training and travel, which is about thirty-five thousand dollars. We end up with about eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for CIP projects, which there's many needs for that. And then sewer enterprise fund, similar story, bigger numbers. One of the things I want to point out, we always, the last, since two thousand and eighteen, we've transferred in all of measure H into the sewer enterprise fund to avoid a ten percent additional rate increase. And that helps us with our debt service coverage as well as pay for capital projects. So you start out with about one point one million, again, primarily due to measure H fund transferring in. You can see the ASL capital outlay, conference training, travel adjustments. We end up with nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for projects. And then the other funds, these are smaller funds, just so you can see all the detail. I really don't have any comments unless there's any questions about these funds. Page twenty-one and twenty-two. And then on page twenty-three, you have the total operating budget. And you can see that the proposed budget is twenty-nine million, five hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars in revenue or one point eight million dollars higher than last year. And expenditures, twenty-five million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars or one point six million dollars, six point eight seven percent. So it leaves about four point two million dollars for capital projects and reserves. Any questions so far? We listed here all the projects we've completed this year. So there's twelve projects that are listed there. And then on page twenty-six, we have our proposed projects. And the first one is the police department kitchen remodel upgrade. And I'll hand it over to the chief to talk about that.
I didn't realize I had to talk. The kitchen hasn't had a significant remodel since the building was constructed. A lot of the equipment in there is circa sixties, so it's sketchy if it works or not. What we found is over the last couple of years with the emergencies that have occurred throughout the county and our need to call our staff in, they've spent long hours at the office. And we didn't have significant areas to provide them with food prep or a place to eat. So this is going to allow us to purchase the equipment that will, or the fixtures that will be needed for that. And we will handle the construction on our own. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, chief. So the next several projects, city engineer Neves and public works director Stone, if you could review those, give us an overview of those projects.
Good evening. So the first three projects that are listed are around Canal Street. And so I'll kind of explain those three simultaneously. And especially since they seem to, you know, they reflect some of our larger amounts that we're recommending funding for this year. So last fall, we submitted an application to Eldorado County Transportation Commission for a call for projects for congestion mitigation, air quality funds, as well as the urban surface transportation block grant program funds. Both are federal funding sources and they have various bonuses or benefits to using that type of funding source and the type of improvements we hope to deliver on Canal Street. But the biggest one is that these are both funding mechanisms that help us support complete streets concepts. So we're talking curb gutter sidewalks and bike lanes. As we all know, you know, Canal Street is home to several schools. We have Markham and we have Eldorado High School. And what these funding sources will help us get through specifically, the phase one A actually looks at doing environmental clearance and most of the design for improvements from Cougar Lane and then headed due north up to Combellic, as well as a new sidewalk connection on Combellic from the neighborhoods just to the east there. So then we also are, you know, we, to not ignore the south half of Canal Street, we looked at submitting another application that goes from Cougar Lane down to US fifty. And that was funded through the urban program. And that includes curb gutter sidewalk and bike lanes and/or sharrows as well. So that project is funded as the phase two project. The one A was we were lucky enough to get urban STBGP funds to construct that critical piece of sidewalk on Combellic that connects those neighborhoods. Right now, the kids are walking in a drainage ditch or on the shoulder and it's really not great. But we do have some sidewalk on Canal and at least it's a little bit more of an attentive school zone feel to that as well. These projects will include a utility assessment as well as paving as well. And then we also have the Perraz Road and Cold Springs Road Storm Drain. You know, this last winter kind of showed us where we have leaks in our boat. And this happened to be an area where I think that we could find some solutions for some improvement. And so typically before we commit a whole bunch of money to a project, we start off with this initial seed money to start doing our utility assessments, start thinking through scope and wisely scope out the project rather than just going very cavalier at it. The same qualifies for the Debbie Lane Storm Drain Maintenance Project. However, that one will probably advance along with the Plasterville Drive Bike and Ped Project, which includes improvements on Green Valley Road. Those two drainage systems are connected. And so it really doesn't benefit the system if we upgrade one or update one and not the other. Then we also have the Wiltsey Road Storm Drain System. This is actually something that will likely be delivered concurrently with the Broadway Maintenance Project that we have going out to construction in the next year or so. And we did, after the storms, we did do another round of looking into storm drains in and around the Broadway area as well as throughout the city. And that's where we were able to identify a segment of storm drain that's underneath Wiltsey Road as it connects to Hangtown Creek and thought it would be wise to include that as well when we do that project. Sacramento Street Water Line, this is an existing water line that travels in the backyards of several homes in between Sacramento Street and Chamberlain. This has been before you under various items, but this, this project would allow us to do a connection of the water main to now serve the houses from the Sacramento Street side instead of the back country backyard approach that we have of the existing seventy-year-old water main. So this would extend the water main on Sacramento Street, do west towards Skyline and make those connections. And then we have a couple here for our wastewater reclamation facility, which is our primary clarifier sledge pump and secondary clarifier number one protective coating. You may recall, we delivered the secondary clarifier number one project and replacing the centrifuge and mechanisms on that last year. We got done with the work and we thought, oh man, we need to protect this new piece of equipment. But then the rains came, so we said, you know what? We will come back at it in the following year and get it taken care of. There's, you know, no lost value in doing that extra protective measure. And the primary clarifier sledge pumps have been in service since the two thousand and eight upgrade and they are now past their useful service life. And just to keep that function of the plant performing at its most efficient, it's a good idea to replace those items. I will pass this, actually, excuse me, one last one. City facilities and asset management program. So oftentimes we find ourselves in a situation where we realize that there is perhaps a utility, water, sewer or storm drain or road that really needs to be looked at, but we haven't identified it yet as a project. Or we get these questions and, and, you know, how many miles, how many, you know, lengths of pipe do we have, et cetera? This is a project that we are recommending that we have to kind of do a capture of maintaining those asset management systems. With the federal government as well as the state government is on their own accord doing asset management programs and in talking to our other local partners in and around the area. It's becoming a really good idea because not only is it great to have a snapshot in time of where you are, it also helps you figure out where you're going and how you can get there. The other part to this too is, you know, one of the benefits of knowing how much you have in value for your assets is it actually affects your ability for refinancing bonds and things like that because it's like your house, it's part of your net worth. So in this particular instance, it's a good place to have good bookkeeping over our streets, sewer, water and storm drain. And with that, I will pause for a minute and pa, oh, wait. I'll pass this off to public works director Stone.
Good evening, mayor and council. The lead water service replacement program, that's something that's been going on for a few years. We were mandated by the state to identify any potential lead water service lines or any unknown fittings a couple of years back. And there were approximately four hundred addresses on that list. We're mandated to do forty of them a year over a ten-year period. And we've been finding about thirty percent of those actually have lead on them. So it's an ongoing thing, I believe we're in year four right now, so six more years we'll be going with this. But what we've been doing internally is having public work staff go out and identify those and replace those as necessary. And what this funding right here does is it puts money in the bank for when that's beyond the scope of our, our internal staff to have a contractor come in and do it. And I've been working with city engineer to move forward with, with having an outside contractor do that in the very near future. The next project is the water meter radio points. What those are is right now, the way that our water meter staff go out and read on a bi-monthly basis, they go to each individual meter with a touch reader and get the reading from that meter. What these radio points do is they allow that meter staff to go park a truck in a neighborhood and all of the information is sent to his handheld. So it's, it's a huge time saver. Some of those, we, we have a few of these test units installed and the results have been amazing, several hundred yards, almost a mile that it's transmitting the data. So what that does is it'll free staff up to go and do meet, meter maintenance on other water meters instead of just continually walking around. It, it's going to be a great help to us. And I'll turn that back over to the city engineer.
Thank you, Nick. So the next item is for Broadway Sidewalks, which is actually currently out to bid. The bid opening is on Tuesday. We are catching, catching that one a little bit off of bidding season. So we're hopeful that we'll get bids, but we may be rebidding it again in the fall. But nonetheless, it is important that we capture some of these additional funds. You may recall, we were awarded some additional highway safety improvement program funds in the early spring, late winter this year. And this also levies against that funding as local match too. And then the same goes for the following project, which is our Plasterville Drive Bike and Pedestrian Facility Improvements Project. That one spans from Ray lawyer drive all the way to Cold Springs. And we do have just a kind of daylight too. We all, we also have another project secondary to that from Highway fifty to Ray lawyer, actually to Armory, which installs a crosswalk at the fairgrounds. I know the fair is on everybody's mind this week and we're very excited to go. So we do have a project in the not-too-distant future to actually do some additional pedestrian improvements for that crossing, but that was just a side note. The next request is for Broadway Maintenance, which is scheduled to go out to bid this fall. And that will be right on the heels or concurrently with Broadway Sidewalks. That includes some water, sewer, storm drain and road repairs and maintenance. And it will complement the Broadway Sidewalks Project, which is federally funded. This is a non-federally funded component of the work. And so we're looking to, looking forward to delivering this. It's also going to be, I think, the, the highest solely locally funded project. And so I just really want to highlight the value and the gratitude that we have to the voters for Plasterville for passing measures H and L. We could, you know, there's a lot of agencies that are not in a good spot to take care of these kinds of needs. So grateful for that. The next is our annual storm drain compliance. This is a regular occurring item, you know, when we are addressing storm drain items, not only with our facilities in the field, but actually maintaining them and keeping in compliance with the permits. We seem to find little annual surprises from the state. And so this is a way for us to continue to capture those and also support our storm drain system. Smith Flat Road Storm Drain and Paving. You may recall, we released a request for proposals and we will be awarding a contract for design and right-of-way services in the not-too-distant future. I believe that's going to be on an agenda in August. And this project includes repaving and storm.
And this project includes repaving and storm drain improvements on Smith Flat Road. The next is our Local Road Safety Plan, which is a requirement for delivering these Highway Safety Improvement Program funding sources. We have currently, we have Broadway Sidewalks, and we have a US 50 safety sign improvement project. And we have had other HCP projects that have helped us deliver projects throughout the city. However, that is a requirement of the feds now to produce this local roadway safety plan. And it's really a thoughtful approach on looking at safety countermeasures and things like that within your complete streets and your corridors. What, you know, goods and services do you have in and around the area, schools, parks, community facilities like the Aquatic Center, et cetera? But the nice thing is, they didn't just require us to do this and then say, good luck. They did give us a grant for this. They gave us around 40 grand, and then this represents the local match, our contributing share. And then, our next is our annual road patch paving and maintenance project. It's various locations. This is an ongoing project. We've been putting cash in this sock drawer for a little while, and we definitely draw down on it to make improvements throughout town when it becomes a necessity. And it can either be utilized by Public Works staff who do self-performing work for patch paving, or we can hire out to a contractor as needed. But this is, you'll see a couple of projects here with the word "annual" in it. That's exactly what it is. We keep reinvesting in those particular resources. And as I mentioned, it's important to kind of keep tabs on your individual assets, your water, your sewer, your storm drain, and your roads. And this helps us manage those assets as well. Then, we also have the annual striping and signage maintenance. This is for delivery of a thermoplastic contract to redo some of the striping within town. Thermoplastic tends to hold up quite a bit better than paint. But, you know, in particular instances, paint is warranted, so we kind of go back and forth. But this particular one happens to be for the thermoplastic component. And with that, I will pass it off back to Nick.
Thank you. Next up is the courtyard building improvements and maintenance. This is an ongoing project that was approved a few years back. There was a little bit of sticker shock once one of the first estimates came in for conventionally-built new buildings up there. So we're exploring some other options with modular and pre-made buildings. And this would be taken care of with SB 1. Support facilities aren't approved use of that funding, as long as it's split like three ways with, it would be water, sewer, and the SB 1 covering the streets portion. Those facilities support all those up there. The next one would be citywide street striping. As the city engineer mentioned, there's a previous project for Thermo, long-term. That's going to be a better solution. What this citywide street striping would do is, I believe it's been about five years since the last citywide street striping project took place. This would go through and freshen up all the paint on the fog lines, center lines, throughout the city. And I'll turn it back over to Rebecca.
Thanks, Nick. The next one is our annual parking rehabilitation project. This serves as a funding mechanism to reinvest and restore some of our parking lots throughout the city. But this one actually particularly focuses on our parking structure. Our parking structure is in need of a little bit of some maintenance, and so we actually are working with a consultant to develop a maintenance plan and thoughtfully plan out and deliver some of those projects. The next is for Historic City Hall Parking Lot Repaving. This is one that we've had on the books. Unfortunately, when we went out to bid, we did not have enough money to pay for it. So we looked at what the pricing was coming in at, and we've been watching asphalt pricing and oil pricing for a little while. And we decided it would be a good practice to add a little bit more money for that project to get it delivered. We also have the annual water valve replacement project. We, you know, when it becomes necessary, and we've actually delivered on a couple of variations of this, but we do replace or install new water valves or insert a valves at various locations with our water system. It allows us to maintain control should a break happen or any other reasons. And then, our annual water distribution maintenance project actually addresses some lines whenever we do have a breakage. It does allow us a funding mechanism then to replace a segment of pipe. I think of the segment of water main that broke, I think it's been about two years now in April, it was Benham. And I'm looking at Michael, and he's, sorry, Mayor Saragosa, and he's smiling because he was out there with us at midnight. So just really, you know, it's a good, it's a good side, you know, savings to have for instances that we can't predict happening. The next is for Hawking Street Sewer Line Replacement. Very excited about this one. The bid opening came in favorable. And this is one that you will actually see on your next agenda for a construction contract award, should this budget be approved first. And we are, we have set aside the additional funds for awarding that construction contract. And then, our annual sewer collection maintenance project. This allows us to have some funding to do some maintenance repairs throughout the system where needed. And then, the next two are capturing our Measure H and L Fund Reserve. Those two items are, for the construction reserve, are only to be used on previously approved and recommended projects by the Measure H and L Committee. They are helpful in us being able to, you know, if we open bids and we're $100,000 short, this is that piggy bank that we would draw from. It's a thoughtful savings portion. And as far as a lot of these projects go, just, we are, we do have quite an extensive list of CIP projects, and I am, and I'll pause for just a moment, but we are going to be putting out a forward-facing list of all these CIP projects in the not-too-distant future, and it'll be a great way for folks to check in. And, you know, everybody always wants to know, is my street on the list? I feel like we're getting pretty close to all the streets being on the list at this point, but really looking forward to being able to daylight that information. And with that, I will stop and pass it over to Mr. Zeller.
Thank you. As you can see, the four items that I have on the CIP budget proposal are all general fund projects. But it is worth noting that two are being cooperatively funded by other sources. So the first is Lyons Park Irrigation. One of the major obstacles that we have had to improving the turf at Lyons Park is in our inability to deliver uniform precipitation rates to the entire outfield. So a new system that's proposed here under this funding would save time and funds that are going towards repairing the system. And we're at a point now where we're, that, with the age of the system, that we are consistently and constantly repairing it. We've already had two major repairs since we fired it up this year. So that's $137,500 project. The second is for City Hall HVAC Controller Upgrade. City Hall does have a computer-controlled HVAC system, but the computer is very old, and it needs to be upgraded. And this project would bring a good system up to date and actually provide much better climate control for all four floors. And we have a lot of city employees in that building, and this would be a major help to them. So this consists of a major software and control system hardware update plus training on the new system. The downtown restroom, this project's being helped by a $25,000 cooperative fund from the Cannabis Community Benefit Committee. It was one of their projects that they decided to fund this year. And so that's going to help out a lot. And this is really focused at some structural issues that we have with the plumbing itself, and also a refresh and make the restroom more inviting and cleanable. So that project is around $65,000. And the fourth one is our Placerville Station. As you know, it's going, it's undergoing a major project right now through the city engineer. And this would also, this would focus on the building itself. We have a commitment from ED CTA for half of the funding. And it consists of a new roof, fixing the dry rot, new paint job, updating the restrooms, the interiors, and generally making it look like a refreshed and new facility. And I will hand it back over to our finance director.
Terry, I think we have a question for you.
I had a question about the softball fields irrigation. Is that going to include the area around the playground? Because I know we've had a lot of leaks and problems with the water fountains, and I think it's been wet next to the playground for a year now. So I just want to know if that's, that $137,000 isn't going to include all that?
Yeah, it'll include anything that's irrigated within the park facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Nick, Rebecca. So looking at the total there, you can see that on the far right bottom, total $6,735,000. $269,000 from the general fund, as we spoke about earlier. And then all the way across to Measure H L, I want to point out that your Measure H L Sales Tax Committee did review these projects. They had two meetings where they reviewed these projects and recommended what you see here. In addition, $516,000 towards debt service, like they do normally each year, for sewer, water reclamation facility debt service. So that's $842,000, $100, $842,155 for the Measure H Fund, and then $2,716,450 from the Measure L Fund. And then, some remaining items that we need to work on. One is adopt the budget. We will ask you to bring back the approximately 150-page document with more details at your June 27 meeting to adopt, if you like. And then, we will be, you kind of, at the last budget workshop, directed us to provide an update to the ARPA Fund, kind of showing you what we've spent the money on and what's left, and what other projects we have planned for that. In addition, you received a recommendation or a proposal to contribute $15,000 to the Arts and Culture Eldorado for Municipal Public Art Program. And so as part of the ARPA Fund budget review, we will be incorporating that as a recommendation. That was kind of what you directed us to do, to consider using ARPA funds for that purpose. So at either your first meeting in July or first meeting in August, we'll be providing that information to you. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any questions at this point? All right. Seeing none. I know we've gone over this a couple of times. So what I'll do then is I'll go ahead and open up the budget item for any public comments on item 11.1. I see people pointing at each other, so I know there's some interest in coming up.
It's what's my line. Is this just to make our proposals, or is it to ask you questions? Like, why is there a name of the Old City Hall Parking Lot? Because that's not the name that was set by the ordinance. Or is it the same? Which parking lot are you talking about?
Thank you, Kirk. I'll, I think it's the one right behind Old City Hall, or Historic City Hall. As opposed to the small one across the street from, right. Yeah, but if you want to come up, Kirk, if you have something about a proposal or a comment on the actual budget that's just before us.
Just to commend you for a great performance Saturday morning. I'm sorry I missed it at 9:00. I hope I could see it on tape before it goes on the road.
There's a video.
The reason I'm here is Kirk Smith. I'm president of the Historic Association of Eldorado County. And we're a group that, back in 1994--
Kirk, yeah, get closer to the mic, they're pretty sensitive.
--did an historic registry of properties in the city. And that was done for a remarkable cost of just $10,000, which today, adjusted for inflation, would be worth $32,000. But we're coming to you very late because it took about six months to be reorganized, and we're preparing to come up with a specific business plan. But here's what you had back then. You have something that's on your website, been used ever since, as something that you and the Planning Commission use all the time for making determinations initially about which properties can be demolished and which ones are worthy of saving. So it has had great value, again, adjusted for inflation, works at about $2 a day. The association worked to get a consultant, and that was the primary cost, will give you a specific business plan to show you what comes of it. But apart from that registry that's used all the time by the city, and was incomplete and not fully accurate when it was done, was to prepare signs. We've got plenty of plaques in town, all over the place, but these are accurate, and they 've lasted for nearly 40 years. So I've done one for you to illustrate what it's about. Now, this one is just up the street at 585. And anybody who ever had one of these signs can take it down, they own it, great, throw it away. But nobody does it because it adds significantly to the value of the property. And in the case of Market on Main Street, they're particularly proud because, as the sign illustrates, what they've done is come full circle back to what it was in 1853. So these have tremendous value. It's not something you would humble. The miners on Main use the plaque, medallions and the like, which can be susceptible to stealing. But the barcode down here means simply decal for vinyl overlay. So it's very expensive to upgrade where we have and duplicate others. In the past, it was just for commercial properties. What about the people with private homes who've done so much love and care to update the homes? So an ordinance can be prepared, we can allow in the public right of way to have signs posted, so you don't have people that might come looking for signs. But it's already a source of pride, great educational tool. I wish you'd bring that down lower. All you've done is changed the distraction from-- I'll check your books, and hope you'll keep us in mind a lot some time later on, just as you did for Miners on Main, so we can give you a business-like proposal that's all spelled out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kirk. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Ryan Carter. I'm a member of the Planning Commission Historic Review Special Committee. This committee was established to help fulfill the responsibilities given to the Planning Commission when the city council suspended the Historic Advisory Committee back in 2015. Some of the duties of the Historical Advisory Committee are the preservation of historic resources, including building structures, objects, monuments, and markers as a legacy to future generations. Also, to maintain a local inventory of historic resources within the city, as established by the city council, and to make recommendations to the city council to update the inventory. In its founding resolution, the committee was also charged with working in a cooperative effort with other governmental agencies and civic groups. For example, the Heritage Association of Eldorado County is actually named in that founding resolution for the advancement of historic preservation. The Historic Review Special Committee has been working to communicate with and unite local groups working on preserving our city's history. Our special committee supports the requests for funds from the Heritage Association and other similar requests that further the preservation of our history. We recognize that the city's historic inventory is in dire need of updating. This inventory is routinely used by planning and development staff in their decision-making process and in their staff reports. It's used to determine, as Kirk said, when structures can be demolished and when they are worthy of preserving. The city's general plan also supports this effort. Section 5 Goal G is to preserve and enhance Placerville's historical heritage. This goal also states that the city shall support the efforts of property owners to preserve and renovate historic properties and significant structures. And so that kind of dovetails nicely with what Kirk was just talking about. There are numerous residents and business owners in our city that have expressed interest in adding their properties to the inventory. So the effort to update the inventory deserves to be included in this year's budget if possible. Just please support the effort of these local historic groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. I'm quite pleased with the budget that we see. I think it represents a lot of hard work and a lot of making sure there's nothing in there that is just-- there that is just something that we don't need. So, my congratulations to the Finance Department, Engineering Department, our Nick and Pierre and Terry, and that you guys have kept a good handle on things. So, very good budget. There's things that are not there yet that maybe need to be added. Historic preservation is a good thing to have for our city and to include the public art, so that we don't end up in the same kind of brouhaha we had with the last public art thing. But all in all, I think you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council.
I think the public should know that our lack of comment or questions isn't because we don't care, it's that we have chewed on this thing for many, many hours. To staff, thank you very much. They do all the really heavy lifting. They're the ones that tighten, you know, that sharpen their pencils and really come back to us with a lot of creative and really good ways to get all this done. H and L is a godsend. I represent a number of jurisdictions without things like that, and they're not doing much with their infrastructure, so we should do that. And I know everybody would appreciate a pitch, but, you know, I'm sure that the Police Department would really, wouldn't mind a donation or two to help them with their kitchen. We've already offered to help with labor, whatever that's worth. But anyway, good work by all and my fellow council members. You know, a lot of hard thinking and a lot of tough decisions. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just have one, I mean, for what Kirk and Ryan brought up. I know we had parked, this is something I had brought up, not this budget, but last year's budget, where we had $10,000 set aside for kind of looking at what we were going to do with the historical inventory. So, there's a small dollar amount sitting out there that, because we know we're going to need more than that. But I do agree that we do need to do something long-term to fix. Like, you know, for instance, my house is on there, but there's like one sentence about it, and there's probably a little bit more information that we could add to that, you know, whether it's the signage. And there's houses that, because of the way the historical districts were drawn, were just left out, which are still very historical houses, are within city limits, which would be kind of cool to have within the inventory as well. I don't know if it's $33,000, like you all mentioned. I think it's going to be more than that, just because everything's way more expensive nowadays. But just something for, I think, my council colleagues to think about as we move forward. And maybe there's something within ARPA that we can look at as well as we do do that. But I don't want it to fall into wayside for years, but I do know that, you know, we're down the line on this year's budget as well, so. So, with that, I do need a recommendation on this, if...
There's no motion necessary.
Oh, no.
It's just taking public input, and this will come back at your next meeting.
Oh, that's right. We still have one more. That's right.
So, no motion necessary, just input, so.
Okay. Anything else that council members want to see or do, or... Okay. All right. All right. Sounds good. All right, Dave, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 11.2. Consider approving the engineer's report for the Cottonwood Park and Orchard Hill Landscaping and Light Maintenance Districts and directing NBS to prepare and submit the levy of assessments to Eldorado County for the placement of the fiscal year 2023-2024 secured property tax rule. And again, Mr. Warren has this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this is a routine item, and this is part two of a two-part series. Part one occurred at your meeting held on May 9, and the City Council adopted a resolution declaring its intention to provide an annual levy and collection of assessments for the city's landscape, lighting, and maintenance districts as required by state streets and highways code. Part two requires the council to hold a public hearing, what we're doing tonight, and adopt a resolution approving the two engineer reports. City currently has two LMD districts, Orchard Hill and Cottonwood Park. The engineer reports for both districts present status quo budgets and levy amounts. The current levy amount of assessments for both districts are adequate in covering the basic costs of operating both districts. It's important to note that neither district has a built-in inflator to help offset the rising cost in maintaining identified lighting parks in open space, and the actual cost of maintaining each district far exceeds the maximum annual assessments. In response to this, the council requests staff begin exploring options for updating the LMD assessments, districts, and implementing an annual inflator that would increase the assessments based on annual consumer price index. The city obtained a proposal from a consultant, NBS, to update the Orchard Hill LMD, including performing a special and general benefit analysis, which is now required, in order to increase the assessments. The cost of the proposal was $29,500 in customary out-of-pocket costs. The base cost is actually $9,036 more than the annual assessments, so as you can imagine, it was cost prohibitive. Staff has decided to take a hybrid approach and perform the study in-house with NBS's assistance, which we've been working on slowly, and it should cost much less. Staff plans on presenting an update to the council this fall. The remaining Phases 4 and 6 of the Cottonwood Park LMD are currently under development, and the final parcel map is anticipated to be completed sometime this summer. At its meeting held on December 14, the Council of 2021, the council approved a consulting services agreement with NBS to form a Community Facilities District, or CFD, to accommodate the existing LMD. Once established, the new CFD will share in the cost of operating and maintaining the existing LMD assets and provide benefit to both Phases 4 and 6. The cost of establishing the new CFD is being borne by the property owner, and staff will be working with the property owner over the coming months to establish the new CFD and implementing as early as the '24-'25 tax season or tax year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask that the council approve the resolution before...
All right. Thank you, Dave. Any questions? I just have, I have one. So, on for Cottonwood 4 and 6, so as they look at it, so they're going to assume that basically the cost to it would be based on the rest of them coming up to what today's prices should be? I mean, as they look at what 4 and 6's fees are going to be?
Right now, what we're doing is we're, you have an opportunity to create assessments that actually would represent the true-borne cost of their share. The existing LMD assessments would remain the same.
Right. But they will, but I guess my question is, that the actual cost will be still proportionate to, you know, what the other people are paying less right now? So, the new one's going to take in full consideration?
Real-world cost.
Real-world cost of their prorata share?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Got it. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up this item for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring this back to public, to the city council.
I'll move that we approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a first and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Claryche?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomber?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeremy?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah Gutson?
Aye. All right. Thank you. And Dave, thank you for tackling this internally and saving us, you know, the taxpayer some dollars here as well, so appreciate it. Okay. That ends our, the public hearings portion of our meeting tonight, so we're going to go to our one discussion and action item, and that's item 12.1. And that's to approve the bid for All Sport America to resurface the tennis courts and construct four new pickleball courts with an option for lighting at Lyons Park. And Mr. Zeller has his report for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The recommendation and proposal in front of you tonight is to allow me to negotiate and execute an agreement with All Sport America for design-build services. And this would be to construct four new concrete pickleball courts with all the accessories, the nets and the fencing, and also to resurface our existing two tennis courts. And there's also an ad alternate for lighting the courts. And that total cost with the ad alternate would be $318,720. The funding would come from three sources. AB-68 was a per capita grant that we received, and that's $177,952, with additional funding of $120,000 from our park development fund. Those would be the impact fees. And also, with the approval of $41,768 from the general fund unassigned balance. So, just a little bit of background, we did receive, all cities and counties in California received the AB-68 grant. For the city our size, it was $177,952. And the grant was an 80-20 grant, meaning we had to bring 20% of the funding to any project that we proposed. And the goal of this funding was to repair or replace existing rec amenities, purchase land for recreation purposes, or to construct new amenities in existing parks. So, we're doing repair, we're doing two out of those three with this project. And picking this project was based on the city's recreational needs, on our current conditions of our amenities. Anybody playing tennis on the courts would agree, it needs some help. And also, striking a balance between repairing existing and building new rec facilities. Resurfacing the existing tennis courts at Lyons Park and constructing the four new pickleball courts with new lighting for all six courts would best meet the priorities that I stated. Lyons Park is our most visited park after Goldbug and has the most amenities and parking available for adding rec facilities. So, we've been working with a company called All Sport America, and they are a design-build contractor who is pre-approved through our purchasing agreement with Sourcewell, a company that provides government with contractors that have set prices for work. We have been using that. I believe Mr. Stone used them for some work recently that was approved. So, if this project is approved at this meeting, we would target July as a start date for construction with completion in the late fall. We have done our survey work already, and the location, if you look at Attachment C to the staff report, it gives you a visual of where the courts would be located in relation to the existing tennis courts. As far as environmental review, this project has been determined to be categorically exempt. And the main reason is that it's minimal disturbance, and it's also the, basically, just an expansion of our existing amenity out there of the tennis courts. So, it's adding about a third more hardscape to our existing tennis courts that are out there already. And as far as the cost, the cost of the base bid, which includes the construction of the courts, the fencing, posts, conduit for lighting, and resurfacing of the tennis courts, is The ad alternate for $63,800 brings the total price to the aforementioned $318,720. So, under options, the council can approve the base proposal, approve it plus the ad alternate, or reject the proposal. And as I had said before, the budget impact is shown in the impact portion of the staff report. And the total that we have with a contingency is $339,720. And I can answer any questions on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Questions? Yes. Yes, Dave?
One of the things we tried to do with this project is fund the entire project by the Park Development Fund, because it truly does expand the availability of services there. But the challenge is, is that there wasn't enough Park Development Fund available to fund the whole thing. However, as we talked about earlier in the budget presentation, Mallard, Middletown Road projects are coming up, and they'll be paying their fees as well as other developments. And if there's an opportunity before this project finishes entirely out of Park Development Fund, we would come back to you with a recommendation for a budget amendment.
Thank you, Dave. On the call, you had a question?
Yeah. What would the anticipated ballpark cost be for electricity and maintenance of the lights?
Are you saying for the pickleball courts or for the whole?
For the, well, for the pickleball courts and the tennis courts, the new lighting, not the lighting that exists for the softball courts?
We can base those costs on a lifecycle cost, and if we're looking at around $63,000 for the construction of those, they all last a good 20-plus years. The lights are LED lights, and so I think the cost is going to be fairly minimal, because these fixtures are going to be small, direct, focused lights. I don't have an exact number, but I believe our existing general fund costs for our supplies and contractual services should be able to manage that, manage that cost for the lighting.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and open up for public comments on item 12.1.
Ryan Carter, City of Placerville. Just have a couple of quick questions. I know the county is currently struggling with Cameron Park pickleball courts regarding noise. They've had to shut them down, as a matter of fact. And I wonder if we anticipate any noise issues due to nearby residential houses in similar fashion to what happened at Cameron Park Lake. And in that same conversation, I wonder if we've had any conversations with the county, because I know that they are currently trying to relocate those pickleball courts. And have we had any conversations to maybe get some cooperation from the county as part of those relocations of the pickleball courts? Maybe we get some funding to make these pickleball courts part of that relocation? So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Pender, and I've used the pickleball courts in Cameron Park. And I first moved to Eldorado County in 1954, and I think I'm in better shape because of playing pickleball the last couple of years that we've had those courts. And just would like to make a comment about the Cameron Park courts. There is a fence, I think, a house fence two feet from the pickleball courts. So, Lyons Park is very different in terms of, there's a lot more area between those courts and the homes. So, just thought, I don't, I see it as apples and oranges to compare Lyons Park with the Community Services District courts. Thank you. And oh, I really think the lighting's terribly important, because it gets so hot until late in the day, that that would be the time that some people could be using it, and for folks who work, it can come after work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happily retired in Eldorado County about 12 years ago, and I got involved shortly after in the Cameron Park development of the former tennis courts. We had no idea about the sound issues and... there because of the closed proximity. But the sound engineers who tested that site found that just turning the courts slightly and having the racket noise not be projected directly at a house, a slight angle adjustment would send the noise in a totally different way. It's kind of like when you hear things at night far, far away, and other nights you don't hear them at all, but you know the same thing's going on. Maybe it's coyotes, maybe it's the kids at the pool nearby, or whatever. So I hope that they'll look into that and say how they're going to adjust that. Anyway, I do want to mention a couple of things. When we were trying to promote more courts, and especially more courts that seniors would have access to, one of the things we ran into was, in summer, no room for seniors. It was all kids. And I don't want to complain about kids. I was a school teacher for many, many years. I do want to say that we need places for the 15-plus and 60-plus crowd. And I'm now 70-plus, and I'm still trying to get out there and bang the ball around and have some fun. We went to Folsom, we went to Lifetime, before they put some courts in place and told them that the growing thing amongst people seems to be pickleball, why don't you put a little bit of pickleball in there? And both groups said, no, we have to do our tennis courts, it's already in the plan, and so on. It's interesting that Lifetime is now probably six to eight years past putting in their tennis courts, that we were kind of hoping that they'd take a half or a third of the property and give it to pickleball. And just recently, they totally took out all the tennis courts, and they're all pickleball now. And this past weekend, if you happened to be driving by, you saw them filled with people in a big tournament that was held there, and they came from all over. In fact, I've traveled all over to go to pickleball tournaments as well. That helps generate a little revenue when the people come in and play in your communities. Everybody's looking for a place to go for such a thing. So I do want to say, I hope you support the plan. I like the idea of having lights. When we started out, it was almost all seniors at Cameron Park. The growth was amazing. We took numbers and kept feeding them to CSD, because we wanted to get more support to put fences around them and that, this and that. So we fed those numbers, and it grew astronomically. By the time it closed down, most mornings on playdays, there were 80 people on the courts. There were only room for, let's see, six times four, there was only room for 24 people on the regular courts. But we put up some temporary courts on the other tennis courts that weren't being used, and we were able to accommodate more than half the people, and then we'd rotate in. And so it was that sort of a thing. The growth has been on.
Sir, we'll have to have you wrap up comments. I apologize.
And I'm going to just say one more thing.
Sure.
That the people who are filling in now are the young people and the middle-aged people who want to play pickleball. They kind of learned that it was kind of fun from some of the seniors, I guess. And they like to play at night, because they have to work all day. We seniors, we can play anytime. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name is Helen, and I'm a longtime resident of Eldorado County in Placerville, 40 years. Worked here in this community. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments as a member of the pickleball community and part of the Cameron Park community of play. You, as the last speaker just mentioned, there were many, many people that eventually were coming to Cameron Park, and it was because of the culture. And I am bringing this up now, even though it's not a specific scientific thing to say why you should pass it or consider it, but I think it's important as a member of this community, because we know that Placerville has a very unique culture, in that all of us, as different as we are, somehow we welcome everyone. And that's what the Cameron Park group felt, and these 300-plus people who were coming to this, to that place, were coming from all over. They were coming from all over the county. They were bringing revenue, because they'd stop and get gas. They were giving revenue, because they were getting something to eat. They were walking around the park, maybe they were playing disc golf, but they were bringing their families. So therefore, it became family experiences. So that's another piece just to consider, because this Lyons Park is a really important place in our town. We do not have enough public spaces for recreation. And we're talking about recreation for all ages, and that serves all these different kinds of people, working people, children. Additionally, people who work, like the guys, the firefighters, or whatever, they're out doing disc golf while they're doing their runs, that kind of stuff, that's what Lyons Park provides. And of course, lighting their baseball fields. So I think it's a real win that if we get this. And additionally, we have Diamond Springs to look forward to from the county perspective, once that ground is broken and we get more public space for all the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead and close public comments on this item, bring it back to City Council.
Well, I was on Park and Rec when we first approved this, three or four years ago, so it's kind of exciting to see this finally come to fruition. Some comments on the noise. Terry Cleve and I kind of went and looked at the park and considered the noise and the best location that would be the furthest from all the houses, and so there was consideration and thought put into that. As far as the county courts, you know, the county's going to need to build some courts. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, and four courts is not going to be enough for all of Eldorado County. You know, that's just something they're going to have to look at. The lights, you know, allows the working people to play. Otherwise, it will remain a retired sport in Placerville if you can't play after five. So I think the lights are really important, and this is a great community asset.
Yeah, I was out there, I was out there when we did the kind of walk-around on the pickleball courts. And although I do understand that the pickleball enthusiasts can be a pretty feisty crowd, my guess is they won't make more noise than the softball people do there, which I can hear. I live pretty, well, Jackie and I both live fairly close to the park, and you can definitely hear them when they're playing softball. So noise is always a consideration, we should always think about it, there's no, you know, I don't want to make light of it. But on the other hand, this is a fairly heavily-used park, and we're used to hearing sounds coming out of there, and so pickleball will just be one of them. And the lights are very important. All flat-top recreation should have lights on it, just because it expands the reach. And of course, they all have to go off at, what, 10, I believe, at Lyons Park by the, I think, it's in the Constitution somewhere.
Our softball lights, it is, they.
Yeah, everything gets shut off.
By 10 or before. These may be a little bit different, because they're more focused to a smaller area rather than larger, and they're farther away from the homes.
Well, yeah.
We can take a look at that, but currently, yes.
And current light systems, too, they hood them in such a way that if you're in where the lights are, it's very bright, and you can walk literally across the boundary, and it's dark. And so they're a little, yeah. And yes, anyway. Pickleball, go.
I know. In my mind, I'm just picturing like pickleball players like creating havoc in Cameron Park with them, people, you know, complaining. And I, you know, it's one of those things where you live by a public facility, there's probably going to be noise, but, you know, I get it. That's another discussion for another day. In any event, is there any other further comments on this item? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
And Mayor Serko, so I'd like to make a request prior to anyone making a motion, and that is that in addition to approving the resolution, that the council makes a finding that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Guideline Section 15301, and directs staff to file a notice of exemption. So if you can do an amended motion, that would be great.
Understood. Thank you.
My motion includes what Mona just said.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve option two, the base plus add alternate in the amount of $318,720.
I'll second.
All right, great. We have a first and a second. Seeing no further comments, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Can I just make one other comment for the record? So Councilmember Clarici mentioned that he and Councilmember Noe live somewhat in close proximity. There's not a conflict of interest, or not even within 500 feet, so I did want to just put that in the record.
No. No, we are not within 500 feet, and I actually enjoy the sounds of people having fun, so it doesn't bother me at all.
Yeah, and Terry, if there's any, you know, if for some reason they are getting rid of equipment and/or whatever, might be worth a phone call to see what the county's doing, but my guess is they're going to figure something out.
Yes, I agree. And I wanted to mention on top of that, that Noe Residence is within 500 feet of this location.
Great. Thank you, Terry. That's actually good to know. Appreciate that. Okay, so thank you, everyone that also came out to comment on this item. Appreciate it. Okay, moving right along, we will go to item 13, with our council report from other agency meetings, and the first one is the Eldorado County Transit Authority.
Yeah, we appointed an interim executive director. We authorized recruitment for the executive director position, and we adopted the budgets and operating and CIP and all that good stuff.
All right. Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
We did some things that most people won't really care about. There was a state, well, they won't, but state of good repair funding was, allocation was requested, and that was passed. But the really important thing was there was an information item on the Greater Placerville Wildfire Evacuation Preparedness, Community Safety and Resiliency Plan Draft Existing Conditions Report. And it was very good, and it's a hefty document. It's very deep. It gets into a lot of modeling for fire behavior. It's for the area kind of around the town, not the whole west slope, but sort of like up to Camino and down, not down, maybe to the casino, and then north and south. And it's really interesting, it has a lot of good information about the road system, places that are one-way in, one-way out, which are hazardous when you're trying to do evacuations, some of the pinches in the road system where the road's only one lane, inadequate bridges, that sort of thing. So lots of really cool information. I encourage everyone to check it out. And it's just the existing conditions report, they'll come back later on after that with modeling, more modeling that they've done, and then actually recommendations on the preparedness issues. So it's not a full-blown evacuation report, that's a different animal. So this is just looking at just preparedness and community safety. So it's kind of an interesting thing, but you should all check it out, because a lot of good stuff in there.
Great. Thank you, John. LAFCO.
Oh, yeah.
We will have a meeting, like, yeah, yes, we're going to have a meeting at the end of the month.
All right. SECOG, we meet on Thursday. However, on Friday of this week, in Folsom, at the Folsom Community Center, is meeting on the blueprint, which is really our regional planning that we do. And it really lays the groundwork for future years for the entire six-county region. I know City Manager Morris will be attending. I don't know if any of colleagues are going. If you don't have the information and you want to go, John, you're going, great, great. I can get it out to you all. It starts at 9:00 on Friday, about 9:00 to noon will be the meeting. And it really goes into talking about the different paths that we want to potentially take as a region, and for us to also adhere to state and federal guidelines as we grow. SECOG is our MPO, which is our Metropolitan Planning Organization. It isn't something that you can just say no to as a city. It is federally designated, so you could, I mean, if Placerville wanted to take our, you know, our candy and just walk away, we could, but SECOG is still going to do our Metropolitan Planning, it's still going to be our MPO, and they're just going to plan without us. So that is why we are always at the table, and especially for rural areas, so that we don't, you know, we have that voice at the table when we're planning, so it's not just about, you know, downtown Sacramento, or in Sacramento, or Folsom. And so this will be our guide for the next several years, and we have to adopt that, adopt a plan by 2024. We have some legislation that may pull that out to 2025, and that would align a little bit better with our sister organizations, both in the San Joaquin Valley and in the Bay Area, which have a 2025 timeline. So we're looking to kind of have that same cadence as them. And so far, the bill's been moving through the legislature, there's really no opposition to it, but still going to take us the year, you know, for that to pass. So invite everybody to come out, public as well, because this is a time to really get more information and really, you know, provide your feedback, what you think, you know, we should look like in five years, but also in 25 years, you know, as we plan. So that's both housing and transportation, and what our roads look like, and the type of housing we do, infill, all those different things. So it's a really good discussion, and we're happy to be there, and I'm glad we'll have a couple of folks there as well. Any questions? Okay. Pioneer Community Board.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up this Thursday, but we did have a workshop last week, week before, for the new board director members, so they could understand the, each departments of Pioneer Energy and how they work together and all that. So, and it was very interesting, and definitely very, got a lot out of it. So it definitely helped. Other than that, that's all we have.
All right. Thank you, David.
Can I reprise my role as the LAFCO person, because there's actually was some, we had a meeting before this one, and there were a few things in there that were interesting.
Absolutely.
I think they're interesting. One of them was, and I got there kind of in the middle of it, was a discussion about the fire districts, and the state of the fire districts in the county. And, you know, I don't think it's a secret, there's, some of them are going out of business, essentially. They're either dark, they have stations with no people in them, or they're headed in that direction. And it's a real thorny issue. There's no real good answers. We're very fortunate here, county fire is in pretty good shape fiscally, and management-wise, we have tremendous leadership. It's too bad the chief's not here. The, it should not come as a surprise. The folks that live near the, the districts that are kind of near the freeway, where there's more houses, and they're more expensive, and they have more tax base, those fire districts are doing better than the ones that are out in the rural parts of the county, where the houses may still be expensive, but there are not very many of them, they have a much smaller tax base. Sometimes their tax quotient of the money that they get, like, I think in Placerville we get, the fire department gets 14 cents, I think, thereabouts, 13 and a half, per dollar of your property tax. Okay, so that's, if you pay, if you live in the city and you pay property tax, $1.13 or $14 goes to the fire department. There are districts where that's like four, five, six cents. And then there are districts that don't have a lot of property value, so their base is lower. They're just struggling. This is going to be an issue that's probably going to have to come to a head here in the next about five years, because otherwise, you're just going to have a whole bunch of districts that are not, they won't be able to provide service. Anyway, so that was, that was an interesting thing. And then we had a, at my behest, actually, when I first got on LAFCO, because I guess I don't know what the status of it is in Eldorado Hills, but they've been talking about cityhood yet again. And I asked that we get a presentation on exactly what that means, because LAFCO is very integral to that process. So we had a very good, I thought it was a very good presentation on just how a city becomes a city through the LAFCO process. It was actually very interesting. So I'm sorry, because I, and then we had a meeting with staff and a consultant about our spheres of influence and information and some documents, and I won't get into the gory details about that, but we will actually potentially be looking at that at our next meeting. But I got a sneaking feeling that's going to go into the next fiscal year, because I El Dorado Hills, but they've been talking about cityhood yet again. And I asked that we get a presentation on exactly what that means because LAFCO is, is very integral to that process. So we had a very good, I thought it was a very good presentation on just how, how a city becomes a city through the LAFCO process. It was actually very interesting. So I'm sorry, because I, and then we had a meeting with staff and a consultant about our spheres of influence and information in some documents. And I won't get into the gory details about that. But we will actually potentially be looking at that at our next meeting. But I got a sneaking feeling that's going to go into the next fiscal year because I kind of told the gal I think it should. Anyway, so that, I'm sorry. That is your amended LAFCO. Usually, there's not that much action at LAFCO, so we got to take advantage of it.
No, that's good, good update. I think especially on El Dorado Hills. I mean, that affects all of us if they were to, to move down that path. So, and it's a, it is a perilous path because the state has made it a lot harder for folks to incorporate going forward. So, okay. Thank, thank you both. Placerville Fire Safe Council.
Well, they always have a lot going on, but things of interest to the public, I think the most important is they're doing outreach for their grants programs for seniors, people who really need help in the city. I'd encourage them to reach out to the Placerville Fire Safe Council. I don't know if they're going to have a formal, I'll let Sue speak to that, process or, or grant application. And then also working on their firewise communities. If you're a firewise community, it can potentially lower your insurance rate. So those are pretty important. So we're trying to organize those, kind of break them into smaller pieces and get those things going. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. No two by two. So Opportunity Knox, the COC.
Yeah, we had a special meeting where we approved the MOU for the construction of the new navigation center. We will not be having a June meeting. And we will be having our special committee meeting on an MOU for operations, including referral process for the existing navigation center later this month.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. And I, I thought I saw, I didn't have like RFP or RFI out for like a street team. That's, that's also. Yeah, so I wasn't, I didn't read all of it. So I was kind of interested to see how that, how that goes or what comes back on, on that. Okay. Thank you, Nicole. I'm going to go ahead and open up item 13 for any public comments on any of the agency meetings we reported on.
Ms. Robyn, member of the Fire Safe Council. And Jackie is right, we are looking for people who need help within the city influence area. So, and we do have an evaluator now who will come out and look at the properties and see what needs to be done to bring them up to have defensible space. So that's, you know, that's the, what you need to do right now is to get ready for fire season, is to get your defensible space. So we are looking for people who need help. And they can get ahold of us at the Fire Safe Council and let us know that, hey, I'd like some help. Please come tell me what I need to do. And we have an evaluator who's well-qualified to come out and look at the property and say, okay, for defensible space, here is what you need to do. So, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. All right. Seeing no further comments, we'll close item 13. Thank you, everybody, for the updates. We'll move to item 14, which are requests for future agenda items. Do we have any requests this evening? All right. Seeing none. We'll move to City Manager and Staff Reports and item 15.1. Chief Ren, anything you want to highlight?
Last month was pretty flat for us. No, no true trends, which kind of caught us off guard because we anticipated with the nice weather comes and increase in activity. So it was a pleasant surprise to see that that didn't occur. I do want to highlight the, the actions of Officer Pullman with the Crime Reduction Team. He was on patrol and witnessed a elderly female collapse on a sidewalk. When he got out to render aid, he found that she did not have a pulse and was not breathing. So he immediately began life-saving efforts until higher medical authority arrived, the ambulance crew, which took a little bit. So he was putting in some work. We're happy to report that after a short stay in the hospital, the female made a full recovery. So we are going to award Officer Pullman with the Life Saving Award, which is the second highest award in the department. So we'll make that presentation here at the council at a future date. We were anticipating initiating our, our summer deployment strategy. What is a summer deployment strategy? It's an increase in enforcement efforts for traffic because the increase in, in holiday traffic that comes through the area. It's also the deployment of our bicycle team and a deployment of undercover officers, just to make sure people are minding their Ps and Qs, mostly around the heavily pedestrian populated areas of Main Street, parking lots, stuff like that. We're going to push that another month and that's just due primarily to staffing. We are down one position and we have another position that's, I never know what to say about Gabby. She's pregnant, having a baby. We're very excited. She's on the roster, so it's. So we're, we're stretching it out a little bit till we can rearrange some staffing and then we'll get out there, get after it.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Okay, any questions? All right. We'll go ahead and open up item 15.1 for any public comment. All right. Seeing none. We'll go ahead and go to item 15.2, which is our fire reports. I know Chief, Chief Cordero's not here tonight, so.
Yeah, Chief, Chief, Chief Cordero did mention that he apologized that he had a commitment. He could not get out up tonight and so he was not able to attend. But any questions, we can give those back to him and get those answered on the fire report. So.
Understood. Thank you. Is there anything that anyone wanted to comment on 15.2? Yeah. I'll go ahead and open up item 15.2 for any public comment. All right. Seeing none. We'll go ahead and close public comment and move to item 15.3, which is our Development, Development Service Department report. And Mr. Revos.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nothing really to add, other than I want to highlight at the bottom of your last page on the report under department revenue. We're, we're pretty excited with the size of our projects that have come in, have really boosted the revenues. You could see comparing May this year as opposed to May of last year. And when you look at the impact fees, you can see what, what a difference one house will make. That's what the park traffic and sewer fees were from. One house generated those impact fees. Anyways, happy to answer any questions you may have on the report.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions?
Wait a second, I have a question.
Can you just go over that last bit you just said there again? If we look at the bottom of this, this page here with the bar graphs, this one?
Yes.
And were you talking about the revenue? Okay.
Under revenue, if you see, we've taken in quite a bit.
Yes.
In building department, those would be both fees for plan check and permit issuance. We're up to $93,000 were taken in for, for the month of May. So we're pretty excited about that.
Okay. And you said that that was one house?
No, I was referring to the impact fees.
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you. Because I was going to be really, really depressed if that's what, because that's, no, but you got to answer questions sometimes. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Yes.
All right. We'll go ahead, open up for any public comments on item 15.3. Seeing none. Thank you, Pierre. We'll move to item 15.4, which is an acknowledge and file the HDL sales tax and economic report for the quarter. Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we covered most of this information in the budget presentation. So there's a few items I'd like to bring up. One is, we always appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 55. And we did have some jockeying going on this quarter. So Fuel for Less, Placerville Polaris, Power &amp; Tools, Sacred Roots, and Sierra Home Alternatives were added to the top 25. And Big Five, Sporting Goods, Sade Mart, Shell, Sierra Nevada Tire dropped off. However, they're pretty close to that top 25 still. So that happens from quarter to quarter. And then there's two graphs I'd like to bring to your attention. One is the per capita tax surplus gap comparison. This is a new graph. It looks like this. And what it does by category, it shows you how well we perform as compared to our, our countywide averages. And you may notice that we're doing pretty good all the way down to women's apparel. And then it, we, we, we were balanced, but we're, we don't have a surplus. And then it goes down to casual, fast casual restaurants, family apparel, fine dining, and discount department stores, pretty large deficit. So the point is, is that when we look at economic development, these are some areas we should be focusing on, potentially providing more services to our residents. So just food for thought. And then the other one is the brick and mortar online sales tax. So what this does is it compares online sales tax to brick and mortar sales tax for just general consumer goods. It doesn't include autos and, you know, building materials. But the interesting thing is, you may recall during the pandemic, online sales tax just shot up. And we, because we generate 20% of the sales tax in the county, we, we received 20% of the overall online sales tax in the county. So at, up top, it, it has your brick and mortar. And you can see that there was that dip during the shutdown and then it came back. But however, online dropped slightly, but it's still continuing. So that gap, I think, is, it's not getting back to where it was. So we need to watch our online. I know that the League of California Cities is looking at some potential legislation eventually. But it is something we need to be, we need to protect our brick and mortar and also be aware of our online sales tax. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions on this item? All right. Seeing none. We'll go ahead and open up item 15.4 for any public comment. All right. Seeing none. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Dave, thank you once again. We like to see that jockeying for the top 25.
Yes.
Means everybody's doing well. So that's great. All right. That brings us to item 16, which are upcoming items, which I'll let people read on their own, which leads us.
I have one.
You have one.
Okay. Actually, not upcoming items. But before we adjourn, I will not be here at the next meeting. I will be at a family reunion camping thingy. And so I will be not here.
Not anybody to care. No people will be happy about that, but yeah.
Well, we will miss you for that final budget vote, but.
No, I think, I think you'll get them.
All right. Well, with that then, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:05. Thank you, everybody.